At this time, I have the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Okay, Mr. Stafford. Mr. Stafford has moved for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Oh, we have to.
Wait a minute.
We have to amend the agenda.
Do you need a second here?
We have to have a second first.
Second.
Madam President, I would like to move to amend the agenda this evening to eliminate item number three under new business from the agenda. Mrs. Fisher, so my understanding is that you are, your amendment to the agenda is to remove item number three under new business?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second to that? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion to the amendment? Okay, the vote is on the amendment to remove item three under new business. All those in favor? Okay, any opposed or unanimous, and the student rep concurs? So now we will have a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
Madam President.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as amended? Okay, seven to zero. Motion carries. Student member concurs. Next is approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Williams. I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, January 16, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, we'll move to the vote for approval. Seven to zero.
Ms. Williams, I also move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, January 16, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Vote for approval. Seven to zero. Student member concurs. Is that it, Mr. Gessford?
That is it.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. I'd like to read, we do have someone signed up for public comment, I'd like to read from Board Policy KD. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. At this time, we do have Carrie Boward signed up. Ms. Boward, would you like to come forth?
Good evening.
Uh huh, any one of those chairs?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. As Ms. Williams had announced, my name is Carrie Boward. I am the mother of a very attractive, intelligent, humorous, wonderful son. He's a ninth grader at Smithsburg High School. Actually, let me take that back. He was a student at Smithsburg High School. I would like to share with you a letter that my son wrote to Smithsburg High School on the last day that he was a student there. This actually is his own words, basically what he's been living for the last, well, I would say even from elementary school, what he has been experiencing and what our family has been dealing with. I don't know, maybe I can give that to you at the end, but I would like to share that with you. I'm sad to say that Caleb has been a victim of bullying since he was a student at Old Forge Elementary. That kind of bullying behavior had continued through his years in middle school and continued to persist in high school. Our family has dealt with this for quite some time. We have met with school personnel, including principals, teachers, counselors, even the school board at one point. We have filled out forms until our, we're kind of at the point where everything that we have done has kind of been, I wouldn't say ignored. It definitely hasn't been ignored. What I feel like it hasn't improved Caleb's quality of his school years, and at this point, we've decided to withdraw him from Washington County Public Schools. Unfortunately, what my son has been subjected to has resulted in him being no longer a vibrant, funny, outgoing kid. Now he walks the halls with his head hung down, praying to get to his next class without a problem, hoping he gets to eat and lunch, eat his lunch in the cafeteria before it's spit on or taken from him. He is now a boy that suffers from severe anxiety, which includes true panic attacks that are laden with true psychological and physiological symptoms, including ringing in his ears, heart pounding, a feeling of weakness, and irrational fears. His grades have taken a tremendous nosedive since starting high school despite above-average Lexile scores. How can I blame him? How can he concentrate and focus on mathematics when he's just worried on trying to get from one class to the next? The effects of bullying behavior doesn't stop at school. Doors now. Now he has anxiety in public places, even the place where he excels the most at, which is a tennis court, which is subsequently the root of why the bullying started in elementary school and continued in high school years. However, I'm proud to say that he will overcome this. He will become stronger because of it. Our family will become stronger for it, and he will be a successful young man someday. We are getting the help that he needs and, most importantly, removing him from the environment that has created these problems, which is unfortunately Washington County Public Schools. I don't want to be that same parent that just continues to sit in front of you blaming the system. But throughout my son's elementary and middle school years, I've spent countless hours, as I said, talking, filling out forms. We get nowhere. The most current policy and procedures against bullying are not holding effective not only for my son, but for a multitude of other children in the Washington County Public School System. It's not, it doesn't only affect my son, it affects our whole entire family unit. Now, as I withdraw him from public schools, which is, you know, his right to public education, now we are subjected to a $650 monthly fee in order to keep him safe and learning and in a nurturing environment. We have rearranged work schedules in order to drop off and pick him up, and of course, he's readjusting to yet another environment. My son's last day at Smithsburg High School, he sent me a text after being bullied for what probably felt like an eternity in a class that was being manned by a substitute teacher at that point because he'd be called a queer faggot and made fun of the sport that he excelled at. He actually had just won runner-up at a tournament the day before. And this was a, you know, basically a backlash from winning the tournament because his sport wasn't accepted. His text said he just couldn't take it anymore. He just wanted to kill himself and make an end to it. I wholeheartedly believe that if I pushed him to continue through his school years, this would be no longer just a note to Smithsburg High School. It could have been his suicide note. But again, I don't want to be just that parent. I want to tell my story, but then, most importantly, I want to see change as a member of this society and of, you know, I have another son that is in your school system, and there are countless friends and peers and relationships that I have with people in the school system that I want to see thriving, but I have heard these stories time and time and time again. Some suggestions. From the time when I was in elementary school until, or in high school until now, there has been always a core group in every grade and every school that is looked up to. Usually, not always, they're the athletic kids. They're attractive, they come from good families, they wear the nice clothes, they drive the nice cars. Those core group of people have the decision to make because they have a following. That's just how it is. They have a following among teachers and coaches and also their peers. They have the choice of whether to become leaders of worth or leaders of destruction, and unfortunately, a lot of those core group take the latter. I would encourage, as I looked over countless websites, and I don't know how much I've actually been on the Internet for the last two weeks researching this topic, but something that I feel like Washington County Public Schools are lacking are showing empathy, teaching empathy, kindness, compassion, not so much, you know, getting back to the discipline to the bullies, but showing that if we are showing each other kindness and compassion, we can actually make a difference. My suggestion, and I have no idea where this will go, but if I were you, or if I was a principal or a school counselor somewhere, I think my objective would be to pool that core group of people, and I would work on making them good, effective leaders, because those followers will then, you know, basically mimic what your leader is doing, because that's what happens, right? You have a leader that either poor, you know, makes fun of somebody, or they pull them up, and I think all of the followers are going to be doing the same thing in response to their leader. Showing random acts of, teaching those leaders how to show random acts of kindness, to put, to, you know, all of those different kind of empathy training, and yeah, we should be getting that at home, but are we always? We're not. And are we perfect? No. I mean, my son is certainly not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, but I feel like teaching a core group of people at each school that are thought of as leaders on how to become effective leaders could make a difference. The other thing is anonymity, something that I see in your policy and procedure is that you can't protect a, somebody that's reporting bullying. You can't protect their anonymity, and I understand that. There's the harassment forms. I know you have to go through all that, believe me, I know, but the problem is, is that you're supposed to fill out those forms every single time an occasion happens. I mean, come on, let's get real. I mean, that is, it becomes redundant, it becomes non-heard, so you don't fill out the forms, it's just a vicious cycle, but the anonymity, the only thing being worse than being somebody that's bullied is being considered a snitch, and my son has learned that the hard way because he used to tell on his, the people that bully him. He has learned that that is not the smart thing to do, and so therefore now he doesn't talk about his accusers or the kids that are bullying him. I don't believe that the policy can, I do feel like there needs to be a conversation, obviously, between parent or child to the counselors or the principal, but I do feel like anonymity can be preserved. I do feel like, why do we have to research past incidences where, you know, a bully is a bully today and tomorrow and the next week and the next week? So if we're reporting those things to the school professionals, I feel like, then you keep an eye on them, I mean, and catch them in the act. That way anonymity is preserved. I do also recommend, through everything that I've looked at, successful anti-bullying programs and campaigns in different school systems are a, just like, you know, an anonymous Dropbox with suggestions on, or, you know, to give personnel or administration a heads up on something that's happening that they don't want to be known for. That's also something I felt like each school could benefit from. And the only other thing that I can say is the hotspots for bullying. I talked to Ms. Handler at length about some of the hotspots and where counselors and administration kind of hang out and make sure that they're monitoring different areas. One thing that she didn't mention, and I did talk to her and I would feel like I would share, is that my son's biggest nightmare is going into a classroom that has a substitute teacher, and I know that there's going to be a need for substitute teachers. I, as a manager, use substitutes all the time in a different fashion, but, and they're not as effective as the norm and the regular that knows the kids and the structure and the curriculum. What I will say, that's a hotspot. That is a terror for my son, and I know that it's a terror for other kids going in the same situation when you go into a classroom that's being led by a substitute. There is unfortunately less structure, less curriculum being offered, and it just provides, you know, a Petri dish for this to happen and grow, and that's exactly what happened on the day that my son had finally had enough. So, you know, with that being said, I just wanted our story to be heard. I wanted to provide some type of insight where, you know, we've moved on and I feel like we're, he's going to be fine, but what I, I didn't want to just walk away. I felt like I needed to at least tell his story, share his story in his own words and what our, our family has been dealing with and offer some possible solutions to be looked at in the future. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Boward. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to, who has not had the opportunity to sign up, would like to address the board? At this time, the agenda calls for board member response to public comment.
The only thing I would like to say is I'd like to thank you for coming and bringing your message. I think all of us heard that loud and clear. So thank you for the courage and for your son to write this letter. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would also like to thank you very much. One of the things I was thinking about when you were talking is some of the programs that we do have in place. I know in the elementary schools, some of them have PBIS. Correct me, is it Positive Behavior Intervention Support?
Yes.
Okay, I thought I remembered correctly, and I know from experience that how they tried to reward the positive behaviors and work on that, and I think it's a very important part of our schooling, and I hope that we continue to do that because we need positive role models, like you said. So thank you so much for taking the time to come and speak with us.
Mrs. Boward, I too would like to thank you for coming and sharing Caleb's story. I think you have offered us a great deal to think about and some solid suggestions for us to consider. It's a very serious problem, and it's, I think there are far too many, even one is too many to experience the kind of treatment that Caleb has experienced. So thank you so much. Mr. Bickford?
I want to thank you as well, and to let you know, I know it takes a lot of courage. My daughter was bullied. I don't know if I would have come before the Board of Education to talk about it for fear of, and I'm so glad that you did, and you're already getting response. I'm monitoring our Facebook live feed, and you're getting a lot of support online and other people sharing their stories. So thank you very much for speaking up.
Okay, at this time, the agenda calls for the superintendent's report. We'll start with part of that report, and then, following new business, we'll continue.
Three, excuse me, three parts of my report tonight, two I'm going to share now, and then one we'll share later in the agenda. The first part is that Washington County Public Schools will be operating on a two-hour delay tomorrow morning with a reevaluation by seven o'clock. So that'll be going out on their social media and posting here in a few minutes. So again, Washington County Public Schools tomorrow will be operating on a two-hour delay with a reevaluation prior to seven o'clock. Teachers look happier than students.
You guys have to hide that smile better than that.
On a more serious note, a very important note, Bert, tonight, we want to honor and recognize one of our schools for some outstanding achievement, for achieving the 2017 Maryland Excellence in Gifted and Talented Education Award. And at this time, I'd like to ask that Dr. Jessica Reinhardt and Dr. and Principal Janet Palmer come forward, share a little bit of information with you, and they brought a team of people with them, and in a few minutes, board members, I'm going to invite you to go down front and honor our guest. So, Dr. Reinhardt?
Good evening, Madam President. Dr. Michael, thank you for giving me the opportunity this evening to celebrate the designation of Williamsport Elementary School as an Excellence in Gifted and Talented Education, or E-GATE, school. I'm proud to be joined by an amazing team of educators this evening. With me are Dr. Janet Palmer, who's the principal, Mrs. Rhonda Smith, who's the assistant principal, Mrs. Heidi Stright, who is the GATE teacher, Ms. Kaylee Stout, who is the Magnet Two teacher, Mrs. Sandra Lord, she is the Magnet Three teacher, Mrs. Kimberly Gravenstein is Magnet Four, and Mrs. Kimberly, sorry, Mrs. Kayla Saunders is the Magnet Five teacher. With us was supposed to be Dr. Lori Ridgely, and she is the lead teacher. She was instrumental to the success of the team. She was unable to join us this evening. Williamsport Elementary School has achieved essentially what few Maryland schools have. In fact, there are only 34 other schools from across the state who are current E-GATE school designees. To be awarded E-GATE school status, applicants must meet 18 of the 21 criteria in four separate domains of Maryland's Criteria for Excellence in Gifted and Talented Education. That is the document that preceded the Code of Maryland Regulations for Gifted and Talented Education. So COMAR is essentially the skeleton of that document. The four domains include student identification, curriculum and instruction, professionally-qualified teachers and professional development, and finally, program management and evaluation. Williamsport Elementary School met 20 of the 21 criteria across those four domains. This may look like what your life's work. This is essentially what was compiled by the team, and becoming an E-GATE school requires a lot of courage to embark on a journey that impires into the current processes of the school and involves a very rigorous self-study. Some have even said that this process have provided, has provided them with the most intensive professional development experience they could have ever received. Their journey spanned three years and included two portfolio submissions to the E-GATE Review Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Maryland Gifted and Talented Advisory Council. So both the school-based GATE program and the Magnet program underwent review, which means that Williamsport Elementary team members essentially doubled, completed double the work of any of the other E-GATE designees. That's a great deal of dedication. The achievement of this particular award proves that demonstrating excellence in gifted and talented education is indeed a tremendous pursuit. For Williamsport, this was a collaborative act by team members who dedicated many, many hours to this process, so please join me in congratulating Williamsport Elementary School in achieving E-GATE school status. And if any of the other members of the team would like to add in some comments about their experience, it was truly a wonder to see them at work.
We just want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. The staff has done an amazing job, like Dr. Reinhardt had shared. It was definitely a reflective practice. It allowed us to really look at what we were doing for our students and to improve our process and improve the learning and instruction that was happening in our classrooms every day. So a great effort by our staff and courageous in looking at what we need to do differently to better support our students every day. So thank you for allowing us to come before you. It's quite an honor.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? Brought a very shy group tonight. I think that's what they're smiling about, maybe that I smiled about. I'm going to read the reward from up here, just because it'll be picked up on the mic, and then we'll come down and present it to you. There's a lot of excellence in this plaque. Accommodation for Academic Excellence presented to Williamsport Elementary School in recognition for being named a 2017 Maryland Excellence in Gifted and Talented Education School and for your commitment to the rigorous pursuit of academic excellence, February 6, 2018, presented on behalf of the Superintendent of the Board of Education. I'll come down and present this to Dr. Palmer, and board members, if you'd join us, please. Congratulations.
Can we see everybody?
Thank you again. Congratulations. Sure staff, there's a lot to get home and get ready for, a row to our delays, so feel free to slide on out. That concludes my, this portion of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. We have no old business this evening, so we'll move on to new business, and the first item of new business is Mr. Prue, who is here to offer for consideration, some appointments to the advisory committee for FEAC, I believe. Is that right?
It is. Good afternoon, Mrs. Williams, members of the board. In closed session this evening, we presented to you recommendations for board advisory committees, and at this point, staff is seeking your approval.
Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for approval of proposed candidates for membership on one of the Board of Education advisory committees.
Thank you, Mrs. Stafford. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion, any questions for Mr. Prue? Okay, if not, we'll move to the vote for approval. All those in favor? Seven to zero. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Prue. Our second item of business is consideration of the consent agenda. Mr. Bickford?
Good evening, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have two items for review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee on January 16th and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements for a network security assessment to Securants Consulting at a total cost of $54,120 and a consultant for employee benefits program to Bolton Partners, Inc., at total cost of $53,365.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stafford? Questions for Mr. Bickford? Any discussion?
I have one.
Mr. Stafford?
I should have put this in ahead of time, but I dropped the ball on it. Under the network security assessment, I was just curious as to what the phrase "social engineering, onsite and/or remote," what that referred to, if anybody knew. Is Alton back there? Is Alton back there?
They send out things through email to try to get you to enter personal information and...
All right.
Any further questions? Okay, motion is for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, seven to zero. Student member concurs. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Our next item is consideration, first reading of proposed changes to policy BBFE, BBFER, BBFE-E2, E3, E4, and E5. Mr. Trotta, good evening.
Thank you, good evening. My way of background, in 2012, the Washington County Board of Education updated its ethics policy as required by Maryland state law. Recently, the legislature and the State Ethics Commission updated the state law and the administrative regulations that govern this particular area. This action prompted the Board of Education's Policy Committee to conduct a comprehensive review of the Board of Education's ethics policy to determine whether any changes would be required. The Policy Committee has conducted three meetings. Those meetings are open to the public. At those meetings, they carefully reviewed the changes that had been recommended and offered by the state. And they're going to be offering several recommendations to the board this evening. It's important to note that a local Board of Education is authorized under state law to have more stringent requirements than the state of Maryland requires. And in certain cases, the Policy Committee is recommending that the board not adopt some of the state law changes because they're less stringent than what the Policy Committee believes ought to be in place. At this time, I want to provide an overview of the proposed changes. If you would first look at policy BBFE, you will note that four new definitions have been added. For instance, the terms "Board of Education" and "official" now appear in the policy. And I think it's important, the term "official" is an important term that you might use this evening again. An official is a member of the Board of Education, an employee of the school system, and also includes the superintendent. If you would next turn to the administrative regulation, you'll note on Page One that the purpose and background clauses have been updated. A new definition has been added, and this is one of the new requirements of the state. They require that you now report whether you have a second home. And if you have more than one second home, you must designate which of those second homes is your second home. This is the state requirement that they have indicated we must include. On Pages Two and Three, you'll note minor modifications that have been made with regard as in accordance with the state law. And if you turn next to Page Nine, Paragraph 3D, this is one of the instances where the Policy Committee is not recommending that the board follow the state law. This new state law indicates that if you were a lobbyist and then you came to work for a Board of Education, you would be required for a period of one year not to be involved in any matter that you were involved in as a lobbyist. So the state law says that employees are covered by this, but not the Board of Education. And the Policy Committee felt that this ought to apply to all officials of the school system. So this is the situation where the Policy Committee is recommending that we not follow state law and that we have a more stringent requirement. There's also a new section that's been added on Page 10. Section 7A2 has been amended to prohibit an official from influencing the award of a state or local contract to a specific person. There is also a new section added as a result of the state law on Page 11. Section 7D makes it clear that public resources cannot be used by an official to solicit a contribution, as that term is defined in the election law. I next like to turn to the financial forms. There's been some minor adjustments to the Disclosure Form A, that's Exhibit Number Three. And you'll note that includes now a requirement that you disclose which home is your designated second home. I would just point out that the prior or the current form always required a board member and other officials who must fill out the long Form A to list all of their real estate holdings. So this is merely a requirement now that if you have more than one home, you have to designate which one is your primary residence and which one is your secondary residence. Another change you'll note is in the lobbying registration form. The prior form required a lobbyist to make a report of a gift if the amount was $150. It's now been changed to $100. We're also recommending that the Board of Education adopt a new form. We occasionally receive requests from individuals to provide an advisory opinion. We've created some new forms for your consideration that would require that person who's requesting an advisory opinion to complete the form that we provided to you. And we also have instructions that assist the individual in determining the information that is to be provided. I next wanted to discuss the steps going forward. Assuming the Board of Education approves the proposed changes this evening, the modified document must be submitted to the State Ethics Commission for its review. Under law, that public body has 60 days to act. If they do not act within that 60-day period, it's assumed that they have approved proposed changes. In light of the time lapse between the first reading and the second reading, we have an existing board policy that indicates if you expect the term to be, the gap to be more than eight weeks, that the board has to adopt a motion to waive the requirement of Article 4B-1C of Policy BG. So we'll be requesting you to adopt a separate motion this evening, if you're so inclined, to extend the time period between the first reading and the second reading. And I'm glad to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy BBFE entitled Ethics Administrative and Administrative Regulation BBFER, the Washington County Board of Education Ethics Regulation. Exhibit BBFE-E2, Lobbying Registration Form and Lobbying Activity Report. Exhibit BBFE-E3, the Financial Disclosure Form A. The first reading of proposed Exhibit BBFE-E5, the Application to Request an Advisory Opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion? Questions for Mr. Trotta? No? All right. The vote is on the motion to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy BBFE and so on. All those in favor? Okay, thank you, seven to zero. Student member concurs. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Trotta.
Yes, President, I have another motion.
All right, Mrs. Fisher.
I move for adoption of the suspension of policy BG, policy setting Article 4B-1C, so that we are allowed enough time so that, because we might go over the time limit we normally set.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any questions or discussion? Okay, so the motion is on the suspension of policy BG. All those in favor? Seven to zero. Student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Education's FY 2019 General Fund Operating Budget. Dr. Michael, Mr. Prue, Mr. Brandon Berg not coming this evening?
He's here if we have additional questions.
Okay.
Just want to, Mr. Prue, go ahead.
Members of the board, as way of just reminder, I know you've all been in attendance, but you've had several work sessions, one December 19th, another January 2nd, a third today earlier this afternoon. You also have conducted a public hearing. You've heard from the Budget and Advocacy and Review Committee. Additionally, you had a joint session with the county commissioners today on the FY 2019 General Operating Budget. And at this time, staff is seeking your approval of that budget for the FY 2019 General Fund Operating Budget with a total value of $275,995,704. Staff is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is there a question?
Madam President, I move to approve the Board of Education's FY 2019 General Fund Operating Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any questions for Mr. Prue or Mr. Brandon Berg, or any discussion? The motion is to approve the Board of Education's FY 2019 General Fund Operating Budget. All those in favor? Seven to zero. Motion carries. Thank you. And we're back to the superintendent's report.
Okay, the final item that I want to mention this evening, this week, February 5th through 9th, is National Counselor Week. And I just wanted to thank our counselors in our schools, our middle, our elementary, our middle and high school counselors for the hard work that they do. Robin Handler and her department that work with the counselors. There's obviously been a lot of change to the counseling role over these many years, not only to work with academic support, emotional support for our students. They help parents in a wide variety of ways. They help students, all the way to helping them get into college and scholarships. Again, all the way to just enrolling in school as a young man or young woman. So on behalf of the central office staff, the Board of Education, we want to thank our counselors and recognize National Counselor Week this week. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is personnel action. Dr. Bishop?
Good evening, Dr. Michael, Mrs. Williams, Mr. Stauffer, and all the board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review tonight. At this time, I ask for your approval of these personnel actions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Approve the...
First personnel.
Thank you, personnel action. Sorry. Lost it.
Okay, thank you. The motion is to approve personnel actions discussed earlier in closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any questions, any discussion? If not, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving personnel actions? Thank you, seven to zero. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have Mr. Trotta and Mrs. Artif Cade, who is their legislative representative, come forward to brief us on the 2018 Maryland Legislative Session to Date. Good evening, Mrs. Cade. Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I had started my report, which I wrote last Wednesday, saying that the session seemed to be relatively calm. Well, I think I wouldn't have written that as of now, because as you, several of you who are on this quick-response team, there's a lot of activity and a lot going on. My understanding is that there are about 1,000 bills in to be drafted. There's a deadline on this Thursday for bills to be introduced that to be assured of getting a hearing. And so there's this great glut of bills that the bill drafters are trying to complete. And as you know, some of you, and I hope maybe now all of you, the bills that you have been asked to be introduced, we have now in a draft form. And hopefully tomorrow morning, the delegation will be approving those bills, and they will be dropped in and then assigned to committees, and we will start having hearings on those bills. So it's going to get busier and busier. And it is an election year, and that always makes it a different kind of year because of the politics involved. And so we'll see a lot of back and forth between the governor and the legislature, which we actually have seen quite a bit of over these last three years, as they are sort of jockeying for position. I mentioned the sick leave bill, and then you've probably been reading that the Senate passed delaying the implementation date of the sick leave bill. As most of you probably remember, this sick leave bill that passed last year and was vetoed by the governor has been, the veto was overridden by the General Assembly. The interest we have in that bill is the fact that they did not exclude substitute teachers or substitute employees in that bill from being paid sick leave. So this is a matter of dollars, but it's more a matter of administrative, complex record-keeping, so that any substitute who might be there like one day this week and three days in the next week, and then no days the following week, but you're having to keep records on their hours, and they can accumulate sick leave. And then what does it mean that they have sick leave? Do you call them to substitute, and they say, oh, no, I've got a sick leave day, so pay me for my sick leave day? So it's clearly something that we feel strongly should have been exempted. People in the healthcare field and social works field who work on a temporary on-call basis were exempted in the bill. But there was, somebody wasn't listening last year, and once the bill got to the floor, nobody wanted to amend it because then it might, you know, look, then it might go down or, and it got very testy about all of that. We tried this fall to get that amendment put in, but so far, as I say, they've amended it in the Senate side to delay the implementation till, I think, July 1st, which would take care of this year. But the, my understanding is that the House of Delegates is very much opposed to amending it. So we'll see. I had been pretty absolute, because that's what I'd been hearing, but there's even letters to the Attorney General as to whether this really applies or not and so forth. So that's the kind of chaos there is around a lot of bills. That's just, that's just to talk about one bill and the time and effort that goes into making it hopefully a better bill. And if nothing happens, starting February 11th, you will be keeping records on substitute teachers and their accumulation of sick leave. So sorry, we can't give you a better report on that. It's interesting that they do, although the Thornton Commission did not yet come up with formulas for funding education in the future, they are expecting that there will be bills in on each of the main points about that the Thornton, the Kerwin Commission, I'm sorry, Kerwin Commission, the Thornton one was the one back in the early 90s, that the Kerwin Commission points will all come in some form of legislation, and they may be saying that in the future, within a certain number of years, these things will be funded. And pre-K, of course, is one of the big ones in that. And you have your points that are in the Kerwin Commission report, and I'll talk more about those as those bills come along. And we do expect a bill that reflects the not-commission reports, and we, their report actually isn't it. They've given a draft report, and their report is coming in in the next few days, and then a bill will go in that incorporates many of their recommendations about school construction and school construction costs and so forth. Obviously, a subject that we're interested in. Obviously, a subject that we're interested in. I'm not going to go over all the bills that I had listed for you already. I think that the, you can read what they say, but I did find some of them sort of interesting. And one of them that when several of you were down, the quick-response team was all down, was it just last week? And we met with the chairman of the Ways and Means Education Subcommittee, and he gave us some good clues about what was going to be happening. But he also said that this bill about sunscreen was going to be one of the first bills to move. I didn't know that sunscreen in the schools was a big issue, but I've been learning about it over the last few days. And there are, apparently, there is a need for schools to have a policy about when, who can use sick leave, what can use, excuse me, can use sunscreen and under what circumstances and so forth. The bill, as it was drafted, calls for staff to be able to, in certain cases, to be able to apply the sunscreen. And there's been, of course, a hue and cry against that, and that is going to be removed from the bill. So that, again, I mean, it sounds like a little item, but it takes a lot of people, a lot of time and energy, and a lot of hearings, and discussions about amendments and so forth, to make a simple bill move through the houses and to be passed and often to be amended before it gets there. I'm going to mention some other bills that aren't listed. There's one, House Bill 221 requires, would require that county governments accelerate the process for permits when, for a school building that is going to be built. And this was put in by a lot of people in Baltimore County where apparently there is a problem. And I don't know that you have any problem like that, but it's a nice thing to have on the books if it is passed. Another bill would prevent any state funds to be used for any artificial turf. And MABEN is opposing this bill. I know in Anarom County now, all the fields are artificial turf. And this would discourage community, counties from doing artificial turf and prevent any state funds from going into that kind of expenditure. This probably won't pass, but again, it's, it will be discussed, and the pros and cons of the artificial turf will be well discussed along the way. House Bill, excuse me, Senate Bill 261 is a permissive bill and I, I think it's a test, there's a test case going on of it, that would allow counties to provide free tuition for lower-income students in their community colleges to get AA degrees or vocational certificates or apprenticeship training. And this would be an agreement wherein the state would pay half of the cost and the county would pay half of the cost. And I think Garrett County already allows their graduates to attend community college without expense. This would be, whatever the difference was after they got every federal grant or other scholarship that they were eligible for, that the difference would be paid. And again, they would have to be graduates of your high school, and they would have to maintain certain grade levels. And there would be greater help for even lower-income kids than, and then there would be a two-step, two levels of support. It's an interesting concept as you hear more and more people talking about how community college should be free for everyone. And so that's an idea that's going to be churning around down there. There are three bills that the governor's put in. One of them is a very interesting bill, and there's a House Bill 281, which is very comparable to it. And these have to do with building a much stronger computer science curriculum and teacher education and so forth. The bill that I prefer, actually personally, is House Bill 281 by Delegate Miller. And it would center the, the focus for the teacher training would be at UMBC and perhaps one other college, state school. And it would require that over, within the next couple of years, each high school would have at least one computer science course. And again, in some school systems, that's already the case, and in some school systems, it isn't. And then it would, in the governor's bill particularly, it would move it down so that there, in middle school and in elementary school, there would be a very defined curriculum for computer science. But one of the big things this does do, and I think, I think some, some bill may come out of this, I don't know if it'll be a blend of these two bills or what, but it does really emphasize the fact that that's where the jobs are. And secondly, that we need to be providing much stronger training for our teachers, both new teachers but also current teachers, to be able to teach in this field or to support the teaching in this field. So I think that's a bill that we certainly want to watch and see how it's moving and see what we think about it and what we would like to have it say. Another bill by the governor is, it really revises what our ESAP plan would approve, what would include. And that's kind of a strange bill because our ESAP plan has already been approved. It would raise from 65% to 80% the academic, the weight of the academic indicators. But I don't think that bill will move since the ESAP plan has already been approved. The last one I'll talk about is Senate Bill 302, which is the governor's, and it calls for an investigator general. Sort of a scary term. And it's sort of exactly that. It is, it's a monitoring arm that is outside of the State Board of Education that would provide oversight in all kinds of ways to the accomplishments in the public schools throughout the state. But a couple of the school systems already had come out with all of the different local school system audits that you already have. And this one has boiled down to one page. The one from Prince George's County was about, I don't know, Baltimore City, was about three pages. So I think the contention is that there already is a lot of monitoring of what you're doing and how you're doing it, and that there shouldn't need to be a separate arm out here that is just looking at and criticizing or supporting what you are doing and on behalf of the citizens, that that is, that is really the work that you all are doing and that the evaluations and the audits are doing and that the State Board of Education is doing. And I'll have lots more to say the next time, and I don't want to keep you long. I understand you've had a very long day. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Questions? Mr. Stauffer?
What is the controversy about sunscreen? Is there something dangerous, Senator? Kids are swarmed or something?
No, I think that, I think that maybe, I mean, some of you may know people, probably, some of the teachers that have been here probably know a lot more about it. Apparently, a lot of kids are coming to school with sunscreen and wanting to put it on, and whether they are putting it on during class, I don't know quite. I was talking to one of our, my fellow education people, and she says she puts sunscreen all over her daughter every morning before she goes to school. Now, I didn't know we got that much sunshine at this time of year, but, and how much time are the children really outside? But this also relates to at events. And the bill would call for the sunscreen to be your own sunscreen, not, you know, you're not passing it around and so forth, so.
And I would like to share with the board and superintendent and those in attendance that oftentimes when a bill is introduced, author, Mrs. Cade will contact us to find out what's going on in our school system, and we have followed up with staff. This is not an issue or concern with our district. So I'm not sure which district it is, but I'm certain perhaps there's been some resistance to allow students to wear sunscreen. That is, that's not something that we're, was a concern to us.
The only thing I can add is when I would go on field trips with students and say we were out in the sun all day, if the students started to get sunburned, we were not allowed, even if we had sunscreen, we were not allowed to put that on that student. Because there was a case where I think somebody did, and the student happened to be allergic to it and broke out and had a problem. So I, that's, in my mind, that's what I'm thinking, something along those lines.
But the bill in its current form would, number one, require the parent or guardian to provide the sunscreen, and they would have to authorize its use. And as I read the bill, and I think Mrs. Cade mentioned it, that I think it would allow us to apply, but that's a little disconcerting. And so I'm glad to hear that they're going to amend that part out of the bill.
In sort of parallel, there's a bill in that people don't think is going to move, but that requires everybody to have a policy about, a task force that studies everybody's policy about the use of cell phones in the school. Well, that I'm sure is an issue here. And in some school system, in some schools, they are prohibited basically, and some they are allowed to a certain standard, and in some classrooms, they are being used for actual instruction. So, and I did talk to Tony about how you have, I believe of, each teacher has to have their policy about it, and they are allowed a certain flexibility so that if it is a, can be used as a teaching tool, fine. If, on the other hand, they want kids to, you know, put down their cell phones and turn them off, that's allowed as well. And that's how, am I correct in understanding that? That makes sense to me. Well, we hope tomorrow morning goes well with approval of our pieces of legislation and that we can move those along through the process.
Thank you, Mrs. Cade. Thank you for the work that you do, and have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. The next on our agenda, board member committee reports. Would you like to start? Mr. Diallo, do you have anything?
I have nothing this time.
Thank you.
Graham, you want to just recognize you have some guests here with you this evening?
Comment, but all right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you want to do it now or wait for comments?
I want to do it now.
Okay.
So I'd like to welcome the four members who have nominated themselves for the student member of the board for their election that's going to be happening next month. I will share the day with you guys, and feel free to pop in and support, but I think it's very important that they come in and see what the job entails from a public standpoint, but know that there's a lot more behind the scenes. So thank you all for coming. I know you guys are busy, but thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Diallo. This is for, yes, the curriculum.
The Curriculum Instruction Committee met on January 23rd. We were given an update on the elementary core curriculum and had a discussion on the Protected Book List, and we meet again on Tuesday, March 27th.
Thank you. Mr. Bigford?
Facilities Committee has not met since the previous meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer?
Facilities Committee met this morning. Our report will be at the next meeting. Also, the next date will be determined.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy Committee met on January 23rd, and at that time, we finalized the ethics policy, which we voted on earlier this evening. Our next meeting is scheduled for February 28th at 9:15.
Mr. Ridenhour?
The HR Committee met on the 23rd of January, talked about three different items, the ESP, Professional Development Task Force, teacher renewal and non-renewal process, and teacher recruitment update. Tentatively, we are scheduled to meet on the 27th at 9:15.
With regard to the Legislative Response Team, as Mrs. Cade mentioned, we were in Annapolis last Wednesday to meet with our delegation and to discuss our legislative priorities. I understand that one of our bills is in the hopper. It's been dropped. It's Senate Bill 888, Washington County Board of Education, teachers and other personnel, conclusion of negotiations is its title. We have three bills that are in the process and have been drafted and are still under discussion for continued drafting. They'll be discussed further tomorrow with the delegation. Those three bills are the Washington County Superintendent of Schools appointment and reappointments, the Washington County Advisory School Design Review, and the Reportable Offense Legislation. So that's what's happening with the Legislative Response Team. Under miscellaneous business, we have future agenda items. There's a future agenda item list that you have in your packet. We have some consensus as to those agenda items. I would note that our next meeting in February is on the 27th and not the 20th. We're not meeting, as we usually do, on the third Tuesday of the month. We're meeting on the fourth Tuesday to allow members to attend, if they wish, the MABEN Legislative Luncheon that's in Annapolis on the 20th of February. If you have anything that you would like to see on the agenda, ask that you let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know, Mr. Stauffer, Dr. Michael, or myself. And then we'll move to board member comments. Mr. Ridenhour, would you like to begin?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing.
Mr. Gessford?
Not a thing this evening.
Just like to commend the, being for We the People team for their achievements, and also the South Eye Robotics Team for their placement in the competition and the three, I don't have their names, I didn't write them down, but the three individual students who received honors also.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Bigford?
I'd like to publicly thank the Tech High students who came to the Washington County Day in Annapolis and really wowed the crowd, really showing off top skills for students in Washington County. I thought it was a really excellent example of what we teach in our school system and just how intelligent our students are, so.
Mrs. Murray? Mr. Diallo?
Nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything either. I'd just like to thank my colleagues. It's been a very long day, but a productive day, a good day. We'll adjourn. Have a good evening.